So first, I'd like to have entertain a motion to approve the agenda presented.
How am I going to approve the agenda?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, could you please co-roll?
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Goethe?
Yes. So first thing is the approval of the minutes from the June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four meeting. We do not have enough commission members today to approve those minutes, so we'll just pass that on to the next month. The first, uh, public hearing for various text amendments to the Anderson Township zoning resolution, case one dash twenty-twenty-four L U P. So, Mr. Jury, could you please present?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is case one, twenty-twenty-four L U P, Anderson. The applicant is Anderson Township Planning and Zoning Staff on behalf of the Township Board of Trustees. The request is various text amendments in articles three, four, and five of the zoning resolution. So just a little bit of a history. The zoning resolution was adopted locally in nineteen eighty-eight, and this was from Hamilton County. There's been zoning in the county since nineteen forty-eight. The last time, we've had multiple amendments over the years, but the last, most recent change, changes were in twenty-twenty. This was for the addition of definitions for massage therapy, medical marijuana businesses, short-term rentals, murals, and non-commercial signage, intimate regulations within the P U D. So that was the last time that the resolutions had a change, twenty-twenty. The process for amending the zoning resolution, there is, we look at case history in Ohio. We also look at if issues have arisen during various hearings, especially with the Board of Zoning Appeals, when they have variances or requests, and also if there is a conditional use such as the short-term rentals. And again, these amendments, proposed amendments, have been reviewed by township legal council. So we'll go through the exhibits. Exhibit A is Article three point eight B one D residence. We're looking in three point nine. This is correcting numbering errors. Some of these were the result of a previous reformating that we found over the years. In addition, the request is to remove the minimum of one acre for rest homes, convalescent homes, daycare center, nursery school, kindergarten, et cetera. And then the lastly is to propose changes at single-family residence district conditional uses also to the multifamily. So any use that's a conditional use in a single family would also be a conditional use in the multifamily zoning district. Exhibit B, well, one, I'm sorry, let me back up because Mr. Goethe did note, under one, impermitted uses, the letter G, lowercase G, this should read three point eight C sixteen, which is accessory buildings, instead of what is proposed there, uh, number fourteen. So that was a typo. So exhibit B is referencing changes to the P U D overlay district, and this is specifically only to the E retail zoning districts. The zoning commission has approved, um, higher density allowances in the E zoning district through a P U D hearing. While we have felt that is permissible, we feel that it should be clarified that this is permitted. So it does not allow the zoning commissioner, give the zoning commission the authority to increase density in any of the single-family zoning districts or the multifamily. This would require zone change. But in the E retail, such as the vantage behind us, that was done through a P U D. This would allow the zoning commission to continue to increase density requirements in the E retail zoning district through a P U D hearing. Exhibit C is short-term rentals. There have been two conditions that have been somewhat problematic for the Board of Zoning Appeals in evaluating short-term rentals. One is regarding parking in the front yard area. It says that parking shall not be permitted in the area defined as a front yard setback of a zoning district. So short-term rentals, specifically if it's a front-loaded garage, a lot of times parking is only in the front yard and is only in the front yard setback. I think the original intention was that parking lots not be created in single-family zoning districts, but we do have the underlying requirement that pavement not exceed fifty percent of the front yard area. So that would still be the same. All requirements of a single-family home would still be the same. So this is just taking out that condition because there was some confusion with it. The same with the second, um, condition Z, emergency response plan. This is not required by fire and rescue or the sheriff's department for short-term rentals, so we feel like that should be eliminated as well. And then, um, exhibit D is regarding decks. Currently, we do not have a required setback for decks in the rear yard area. There is a minimum requirement for five feet on the side yards, but, uh, I'm sorry. There's a minimum requirement for side yard setbacks in all zoning districts for decks. But this would require, I believe that should be a fifteen-foot setback, not a five-foot, um, for decks. So in exhibit D, that would be requiring... No, I'm sorry. It was, um... Yeah, not closer than five feet to a rear yard setback. So that is five feet. That is correct. And then exhibit E, offices zoning districts. This would allow daycares as permitted uses in the O zoning, um, district where currently they are prohibited. So we'll be happy to answer any questions. This was reviewed by Regional Planning Commission, um, who recommended approval as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Ms., Dr. Baker, any questions with staff? Mr. Ella, any questions?
Uh, just a couple. Um... Yeah, you clarify. I did have that one question on the E retail district about increasing the density, but that looks like that's just formalizing our current practice of the board. And then, um, the short-term rental conditional use, I understand that's the parking concern. Is that, how's that been going as far as the B Z A issuing conditional use permits? Do they normally issue them, or how have they been doing on that?
They have all been approved.
I know that's not a text amendment.
They have all been brought, all of those that have been brought forth to the Board of Zoning Appeals have been approved. There has been discussion about those two specific conditions, one regarding the parking. Again, not to treat short-term rentals any different than any other single-family home where you could park, you know, at a single-family residence. So there's always been some confusion about that specific condition. And then the emergency response plans, again, they're not required by the building department. They're not required by fire and rescue. So if they're not required, we've been seeing applicants just submit, you know, your list of, um, local emergency numbers, you know?
Right.
There's a fire call, emergency, call nine-one-one.
That sounds good. And then on the decks, so that change basically is saying you can put a deck in your rear yard, get into the rear yard setback, as long as it's no closer than five feet to the rear property line?
That is correct.
Does it still have to maintain the side yard as well?
Correct. It still needs to maintain the side yard setback, and these are for attached decks only. If it was detached, uh, we would consider that an accessory structure, which could actually go three feet from the property line.
Oh, right, yeah.
But this is for attached decks.
And it says they have to be uncovered, so if they put a cover on it, then it has to be...
Then that's considered an addition, and it would need to meet the setback for the house.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Rans, any questions with the staff?
Yeah, Paul, quick clarification back on exhibit A. When we're saying that any conditional use may be permitted in the P U D, are we allowing those underlying conditional uses now as a right, or are they still conditional uses?
They are not listed as uses at all in the, in the multifamily zoning districts, so...
So do they carry forward, though, as like now they're conditional uses?
Now they would be conditional uses, so if it were a conditional use in a single family, it, it would also be permitted as a conditional use in multifamily. It would still require approval by our Board of Zoning Appeals, but currently those are not listed as, um, uses in the multifamily zoning district.
I was worried I was reading that they were as a right. Is there a specific use that we're...
No.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. So Jury, I've got a question on exhibit D. It talks about that the deck can extend into our front or rear yard, but only puts a restriction on the distance to the rear yard.
There, there are other restrictions for the front yard that are already in the zoning resolution. For the, um, side yards, it is already in there as well, that it shall not encroach any closer than the required setback for that zoning district. So the rear yard is where we're having issues. It's unclear.
Okay. All right. Yeah, just the wording of it. I've been reading it as, okay, rear yard is restricted to five feet. The front yard didn't state a restriction here, but it is elsewhere in the document.
So, um, let's see here. It's in a different section, but for porches that are unenclosed, they may project ten feet into the front yard.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions with staff? Any discussions amongst the commission members? Seeing none, uh, someone would like to make a motion? Oh, okay. We will close the public hearing? So if anyone from the audience would like to speak concerning case one dash twenty-twenty-four, the revisions to the wording of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission? Okay, seeing no movements, uh, we will close the public hearing and then open it up to discussion, but seeing no discussion, if someone would like to make a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion in case one dash twenty-twenty-four L U P. Anderson text amendments to the zoning resolution, motion to approve the text amendments as recommended, noting that correction in exhibit A to G three point one should be three point eight. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, could you please co-roll?
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Goethe?
Yes. Okay. Next on the agenda is a quasi-judicial hearing for a planned unit development request in case two dash twenty-twenty-four P U D. With that, um, we do have an opening statement that I'd like to read, and then after that, anyone that may be giving testimony will have you sworn in. So I'll ask you to stand and swear in. So, uh, first, outline the procedure of the commission. Will follow in hearing and deciding this matter under the zoning resolution. Our decision is subject to the appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, just facts related to the compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chairperson. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chairperson. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As previously stated, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized by the chairperson, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that to be given additional time. This is very important. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support for previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, all persons who may give testimony in this evening's case, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I affirm.
Okay. Mr. Jury, could you please present the staff summary of case two dash twenty-twenty-four P U D?
Thank you. The applicant is Christopher Kit Houston of Taff Law on behalf of Laura Kitzmiller, Deborah Wijl, trustee, Brian and Melissa Anderson, Jeffrey Ruby, Brandon Ruby, Thomas Edgar, trustee, Justin Evans, trustee, Coldstream Estates Development LLC, and those are the property owners. And I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's name. The location is, the street itself is Waterfront Way, but the subdivision is Waterfront Estates at Coldstream subdivision. The parcels there are listed on the slide. The request, and the current zoning is A A, which is single-family residence. The request is approval of a planned unit development for an existing subdivision for the purpose of having a gate across a proposed private drive in lieu of a public street. So again, the proposed development, um, is for this existing subdivision. For a private drive for the purpose of having a, a gate across a public drive, the reasons requesting this was because of heightened security concerns for those that are living there on the street. The applicant is also proposing approximately thirteen acres into a conservation area that would maintain by the individual property owners. Again, the current, there are existing seven lots. Uh, with this proposal, an eighth lot would be created, which is currently the right-of-way for the street. So total, there would be eight lots, approximately thirteen acres in a conservation area. So a little bit of history on this particular development. In early twenty-twenty-one, the concept plan for the seven-acre lot was approved by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. Once that was approved, there was a proposal for a gate across a private drive, and in order for this to take place, a P U D was, was necessary. So then there was a P U D application that was submitted to the zoning commission in January of twenty-twenty-two. But prior to this being heard by the zoning commission, there was a request for continuance. So then on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, the zoning commission, uh, heard and approved a planned unit development request, and this was, again, case one, twenty-twenty-two. At that point in time, it was called the views at Coldstream, which is now known as Waterfront Estates. And again, same seven lots, but this time it was seven point eighteen acres of a dedicated open space parcel, um, along with the seven buildable lots. And then there was also a, uh, no-clearing line across the private individual lot. So then in, um, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, the zoning commission heard an adjustment to that approval. This was to modify the open space area parcel from seven to eight acres. However, so while the open space parcel, uh, was increased, the no-clearing line was moved, uh, further south. Then on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, the zoning commission approved the removal of the P U D. This was a request by the developer. The applicant's reasoning was for requesting a removal was that they had encountered significant difficulties with the gate, a private street, utilities, and water service. So with that removal of the P U D, it went back to Regional Planning Commission on August the fourth, uh, where the subdivision was approved, again, seven lots. So this is how it is plotted today. This is a Cages map. Um, this is Waterfront Way. The seven lots are all on the south side of the street, except for the lot number seven. It is at the end of the, um, at the end of the cul-de-sac. To the north is, um, the carriages at Coldstream, and so all of the lots for this particular subdivision, again, are from the right-of-way of Waterfront Way south. There's a small sliver of a parcel through here that belongs to the carriages, um, and that is a P U D. This is an aerial map taken from Cages. This is a, a current aerial map, I believe, from the, um, winter slash spring of this year. You can see the subdivision Waterfront Way or the street's Waterfront Way. Um, this is Ayers here, and these, this street here is the carriages. And there are a couple of, well, in this picture, there are four homes under construction in that subdivision. The zoning map, again, A A, uh, this is a P U D up to the north. So this is the proposal that has been submitted, um, for the P U D. And it's kind of hard to see the lines, but you'll see the, the no-cut line, no-clearing line, and then a conservation area, which is this area, um, to the south of this red line. This is what is proposed as a conservation area. Again, the public street, the right-of-way would become lot number eight. It would be maintained by an H O A, and then these seven existing lots. These are the areas that we took from our drone. Um, this is looking at waterfront, um, the water view, water view, waterfront. Sorry, I'm getting my names in my street. This is looking south, of course, at the end of the cul-de-sac here. These are some of the homes that are under construction and then some of the homes that are occupied. There are at least two that are occupied and finished. And then, yes, this house here is the, one of the new houses in the carriages. This is just looking at some of the no-clear, well, some of the area that has been cleared and then which is identified as the no-clear line mimics the existing vegetation here in the drone photo. Again, this is looking south, um, toward fifty-two. Kind of the same vantage point. I'm going the wrong direction. I wonder if it's the same vantage point. So this is Ayers here coming in. This is the front part of the, the street and the P U D. These are just the homes that are under construction or finished on the street itself and the end of the cul-de-sac. This is a garden that we noticed that was there that is on the open space for the carriages, and a fence and a garden that was put in without permits. So for findings, um, the purpose of a, a P U D district is to encourage the efficient use of land and resources, promoting greater efficiency in public and utility services, orderly improvement of property in accordance with community plans, and to encourage innovation in the planning and building of all types of development without detriment to neighboring properties. The P U D regulations are intended to permit a property to be used in a manner or intensity not permitted as a right by the underlying zoning district. So in evaluating a P U D request, we do go through the township's adopted plans, including the zoning resolution, and identify areas that are in compliance or not in compliance with the P U D regulations and our township adopted plans. So as far as zoning resolution compliance, obviously it is compliant with zoning. It's an approved subdivision and, um, has, sorry, construction. With applicable plans, we look at our Anderson Township Comprehensive Plan, which is the Anderson Plan. We identify areas of mobility and land use. Um, there was discussion during the subdivision, um, approval process in lieu of constructing a sidewalk on both sides of the street. It was decided, an agreement was determined with the township and the developer to put a sidewalk on one side of the street and, um, submit funds and move constructing a sidewalk to connect this development to the Coldstream Club, uh, where there is a gap in the sidewalk on Ayers Road. So that's why there, and there has been a sidewalk constructed on the north side of the street. As far as land use and development, um, there is a article, or a paragraph that we quoted that was on page forty-nine of the Comprehensive Plan that does encourage the flexibility of development. And if you are protecting environmental resources such as river conservation area, floodplain, steep hillsides, and this area does have steep hillsides, um, however, we feel that, you know, with the original P U D, this was, and it was taken into consideration. However, now some of that has already been cleared, and this is after the fact. So, you know, during the original P U D, there was over seven acres of open space on this thirty-five-acre development. That was specifically in a separate parcel. In addition to that, there was also a no-clearing zone identified. And so our calculations, and the calculation for the no-clearing zone wasn't provided, but we did our calculation based off of Cages and the topography of the site. And we calculated about eighteen acres total to remain undisturbed. Uh, with this particular, um, application, it's proposing thirteen acres, um, under a conservation area, not under a central parcel, which we feel would be difficult to enforce. And we feel that it's going backwards than what was originally approved. And again, the applicant is declaring thirteen acres in a no-clearing zone, but it's all on individual private property. It's not accessible to the public and doesn't really meet the intention of what a P U D is. So there is a landscaping buffer that was created as part of the carriages at Coldstream P U D. However, garden and a fence now have been installed in that as well. So that's, you know, I guess one of our concerns with this no-clearing area. Something like that could definitely be cleared, and it would be too late. The trees would be gone. So, um, recommendations, these are the fifteen standards for approving a P U D or considerations. So in the staff report, we list staff's recommendations, and then following that are the actual, um, standards that are found in the zoning resolution. But these correspond with what is in the zoning resolution. So with number one, I won't go through every single one of these, but, um, compliance with the zoning resolution. Well, yes, the subdivision is compliant with the zoning resolution. So number two is the opinion, um, applicability of inconsistency with adopted objectives and policies of township and county related to land use. Again, the, the Comprehensive Plan does encourage flexibility when protecting hillsides, when protecting vegetation. We feel like that has not been the case with this. The area has been developed as a subdivision. Um, the area was cleared for views, as rightfully so. That's one of the reasons of being in that area. But the P U D tool doesn't necessarily, isn't necessary except for a private drive. And we feel that the, the P U D tool isn't necessarily the right tool in this particular, um, situation. Number three, compatibility surrounding land uses. Yes, it's single-family, single-family subdivision. Number four, the size and physical features of the product area, um, enable adequate protection. So again, there wasn't a landscaping plan submitted. There was the identification of the conservation area. And in the application, it said that this would be included in the covenants and restrictions, but we haven't seen that just yet. It was provided through an email, but it hasn't, um, been included in that yet. Number five, can it be completed within the timeframe? The subdivision is completed. So the only, the other questions, again, with number six, about the timing of completion of the subdivision, it has not been accepted yet. That is the one thing that has not happened in this situation. So it is under construction. The infrastructure is in place. Homes are under construction, but it has not been accepted by the county. Number six, whether the proposed developments serve adequately and efficiently by public utilities and services. It's unclear. Um, there was correspondence that the difficulties with waterworks has been resolved, but it's unclear as to the stormwater infrastructure, who would maintain the stormwater if this were to become a private drive and with a private gate. The stormwater infrastructure as well as, um, the sewer lines, um, the water was addressed, like I said. And then in the agreements that were submitted with the application, the homeowners said they would be maintaining the street and the gate, but the other infrastructure was not mentioned exactly. Number six, it also, uh, about public facilities and services. So, um, a gate does decrease, uh, response time for fire and rescue and that we did note that in a staff report and some items that the fire and rescue would look for if a private gate were to be put in, such as the width of the gate, uh, the Knox box requirements and how to handle a Knox box in case of a power failure. Number seven, historic features... Number seven, historic features, this site, again, has already been developed, so that's not really a consideration at this point in time. Whether there are any significant, let's see. Number eight, whether modifications of the zoning or other regulations are warranted by the innovative design of the development plan. Again, the subdivision is already in, so there's really not anything else that is innovative for this. It's a standard subdivision. We already talked about sidewalks. Number eleven is the other one I wanted to touch on. So, number eleven is, you know, whether the development includes an appropriate amount of and appropriate access to dedicated open space. This would all be private, and it would be in a conservation district, so it's not really open to the public and has, you know, no access by the public. And then finally, number thirteen and number fifteen. So, thirteen, the consistency of the development recommendations from township, county, and federal agencies. And number fifteen talks about the steep hillside. But back to number thirteen, so we did talk to the other county agencies, and we have also mentioned this to the applicant. You know, are there other options for this road to become private and for a gate other than a PUD tool? We didn't get a specific answer yet from the county agencies, and we've mentioned replating, which, again, the applicant stated that may be difficult, especially with lenders. We mentioned that to the county, which had concerns since it was already a planted subdivision. We also asked the county engineer about the right-of-way. They suggested the possibility of a vacation of the right-of-way. But then, if the right-of-way is vacated, that creates a zoning issue, because then the lots don't have frontage on a public street. So, there are issues, and, you know, we don't feel that the PUD tool is the right tool for this specific situation. And we hope that some resolution can be made, you know, with these other agencies, if there's another way or another option. But that's, that's how we've looked at it and how we've approached it, since the application has been made. We have discussed with other agencies as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you, Mr. Drury. Mr. Anderson, any questions with staff?
Paul, I was really good with your explanation of everything, but I think, is, do we have any other examples of this type of scenario, actually, with a private drive or public utilities? Is that where the situation where the subdivision has been planted, the ownership, uh, where the park is located? Do you have private keys across the park, you know? Do you have these for all of the head park drives? Is that where all this, uh, proposed, uh, fire, uh, possession work? Developed in different places to sure people that find them, uh, discussing their, over private boxes and situations, uh, where it's compliant for it? Maybe the other end of here, that's how that would be, there's a series of mine, uh, that are.
Um, the only other question I had there, first, staff, was, Paul, the residual small lots, that's, that's, uh, two or six. They, in theory, could have running on a lot of it, but in the future, would meeting the, you know, the, the participation of the, uh, what would be the impact of, uh, the participation?
So, you could have frontage on Kellogg. It's a public street, and it would allow frontage for these lots. That's how a lot of the lots at the other end of Ayers, they have their frontage on Kellogg. That's how they were planted. The difficulty is, so, all lots must have, unless it's approved through a PUD, all lots must have frontage on a public street. The only exemption to that is if it were approved as a PUD.
One more, I'm asking about the enforcement of the conservations and the, uh, the subs.
That gets back to the declaration, you know, covenants and restrictions. We haven't seen the exact language yet of how that would be, right?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Al, any questions with staff?
Yes, I have a few. It's rather confusing, I think, but I'll try and ask a couple of relevant questions. So, I'm remembering back when we looked at this the first time around, and in twenty-one, I think you just said, Paul, I just want to clarify, it was approved with a gate as part of a PUD. Is that right?
Yes, the PUD was approved, yes, and I believe a gate was.
With the gate. And it differs today from that approval, because it looks like there's been some more clearing than what was anticipated. Is that the primary difference?
Right. That's the primary difference. The other difference is that there was a separate lot for the open space parcel.
I got it.
Mr. Drury, if I can add something to that, Brian, I think that the, um, the issue, another issue is that this is now, for all intents and purposes, a completed subdivision. Some of the houses have not been built back when it was approved in two thousand twenty-two. It was a plan. And, you know, obviously, a PUD is, is in place, or the PUD structure is in place, to be kind of a bargaining between the township and the property owner, or the developer, really, at that point, to get a win-win situation. In other words, the property owner could achieve things that they couldn't achieve under the straight zoning. The township can get some concessions, such as a dedicated parcel for open space, things like that. So, now that it's coming back, and obviously, there's language in the different criteria for the PUD plan approval that envisioned something being developed in the future, as opposed to being developed and then comes back and asks for a PUD approval. So, that, to me, is also a difference from what was approved, was looked at in two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, for sure, you're right, Mr. Paul. The posture is totally different with it already sitting there. And with it, so that, as it's not in a PUD today, right, there's no township rule limiting their clearing of it, is there? Or is there?
No, there's not.
There's not? Okay, so they could clear that. Okay, I understand. All right. I saw reference to possible concerns of the fire department, which are for sure something I'm worried about a little bit, but I just see your summary of that. Is there anything further from the fire department on why? It, like, I guess I'm wondering, is it something they can, if they just get what they need for safety, like, is it wide enough, and they have the right Knox, Knox box and all that stuff, it's not going to be a problem? Or is it just going to be a, a problem regardless of the gates and stuff?
There are different requirements for access with a gate or without a gate. So, if a gate is installed, they will need to meet certain requirements as far as the width of the road, I'm sorry, the width of the gate, the mechanism, the Knox box mechanism. We have other gates, they all have Knox boxes. So, the Knox box would be required, and then a solution if there was a power failure of how to get through the Knox box.
Right.
The other concern is that there is just a delay for service when there's a gate versus without a gate.
Right, yeah, for sure. And then, I guess my last question is on the proposed conservation easement. You commented that, kind of from the staff perspective, you're like, what, what do we do with this? That's terrific that there's a conservation easement, but you really, is it, you're feeling, if, if it's put in as it's structured here, you, as this township, don't really have standing to do anything about it? It's just private among the property owners? Is that the, like, the main problem with that?
When it's on individual properties, yes. It's more problematic for enforcement versus if it were overseen by an HOA in a separate parcel.
Could you even enforce it?
That's a good question, if you'd enforce it at all, and what the ramifications would be, you know, if, if an individual property owner decided they wanted to clear more on their property, you know, how that would.
Right. And that happens all the time, actually. Right? Oops, that's another question. Okay, thank.
Dr. Baker, any questions with staff?
Yeah, I have just a couple. One is that, is there any fire safety difference between a gated drive that has one residence versus this, which has seven? Or is it substantially the same, meaning that we've done it in other places?
Well, we do have our fire chief here, and it's starting to get into some questioning I don't know that I can answer. Do you feel comfortable answering? Okay. Yes, please.
And if you could state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Rick Martin. I'm the Anderson Township Fire Chief. I live at sixteen seventy-nine Tonopah, here in the township. Relative to private drives, if a gate goes up, they are supposed to contact life, safety, and there are certain requirements for that gate. Any gate that's used as an access drive, so it would be this drive, it would be any access to a property where there's a structure, does require it to be twenty feet wide. So, there's, there's the two thousand seventeen fire code, and then there's the two thousand ten unified fire code standards. So, the minimum width is the twenty feet, that's for our apparatus. And then, we have, there's other rules that apply to it requiring a Knox box if there's any type of lock on the system. If it's an electrical gate, then there has to be a way to defeat that electrical mechanism. Talking about the one down at the end of Ayers. That has a, really, three ways. You can pull up, there's a control on the truck that we might be able to use. You can hit a, a code, a four-digit code or five-digit code. And typically, those codes are sent to us via the Hamilton County Communications Center. So, a code is associated with a property. If any address back on that drive is reported as the subject property, that code should come up on our computers within the truck that have that code. If, for example, that pad doesn't work, there has to be another method, and in the case of that gate, there is a Knox box in the back, and it's a key-operated, there's no electrical mechanism to it. We carry that key in every fire truck and every medic unit. We open that door. Now, that particular one actually, if the electric's working, will automatically open that gate just by opening the door. But inside that box is a little tumbler key that we can use to disengage the arms that open and close that gate. So, you know, from the fire services point, if it meets all the standards, then it's allowed to be built by our codes. There is the issue of a gate never enhances the response time, it can only decrease it. If the owner's willing to, has that knowledge, then as long as they meet our code, the gate's allowed to go in. Relative to the private, there are some private gates that we don't know about till after they're put up. That's a possibility, and that's a problem. We may not be able to get through that gate. So, private is different than something that is on a subdivision or a street that's this wide, you know, where advanced planning is made. I hope I answered your question.
Well, all I want to clarify is that it's not a bigger problem, that it's a bigger subdivision.
No.
Okay.
No, if there's one person's house, it's as important as ten or twelve houses back there to us, yeah.
And, thank you. And then, my second question was just, I want to make sure I'm understanding, Paul, that the details about, like, the sewer and the public utilities are not quite settled. Is that correct?
They weren't provided in the application, so that might be a question for the applicant.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. I have no questions with staff. I think most of mine are to the applicant. So, now, if the applicant would like to speak, if represented by attorney, they would go first. And again, this is not testimony or evidence.
Good evening. Kit Houston, Taff Law, on behalf of the applicants. So, I think I have a lot of answers for you.
State your address.
Four twenty-five Walnut Street, Suite eighteen hundred, four five two oh two. So, I think I have a lot, a lot of answers, some good discussion. I think we can provide a lot of your answers, give you a lot of comfort on a lot of the issues that have been raised. So, I'll give you the thirty thousand foot view. I'll, I'll go through the staff report, give you our thoughts on that. If anyone's still awake at the end of that, we have several people that can provide testimony and answer questions on, on the factual circumstances. So, why are we here? We're seeking a PUD. Why are we seeking a PUD at this venture? Acute security concerns for the residents due to the, some of their high-profile natures. We'll have testimony on that and the need for it. What is the township getting in return? They're getting a conservation area, an obligation or a commitment not to clear any, you know, trees past the no-clearing line. As it stands today, and as was duly noted by Mr. Aliff, I believe, the property could be clear-cut currently. So, there's, the township's getting that benefit. The township's also getting the benefit of not having to maintain this road, which will become private. So, no snow plowing, that'll become a private obligation. The approval of this gate is also consistent with the general harmony and character of the neighborhood. This particular property, if you're not familiar with it, sits really in the back of the township. It's very much secluded behind Coldstream. It's not really a walkable area of the township, though that was raised, and we will address that in due course here. It's also important to note that the previous applicant was not these applicants. It was the developer of the property. And it was our understanding that application was withdrawn because there were significant issues with utilities. Our clients have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to overcome those hardships in order to try to get this gate for their own safety. So, a lot of work's been done over the past year or more. We'll talk about that here in a moment. The purpose of the PUD, now addressing the findings portion of the staff report. The purpose of the PUD, we believe it fits squarely into the purpose of the PUD, as the code itself indicates, PUDs are intended to, quote, "permit property to be used in a manner of intensity not permitted as a right by the underlying district regulations," close quote. Here, a gate's not allowed in AA. We're asking for a PUD in order to get that gate. And again, in exchange, we're giving conservation. We're going to help Anderson maintain its Tree City USA status, which is so important. Prior applications and mobility, we did briefly touch on the prior application not being the applicant's. As far as the mobility, again, this, I believe staff indicated there was a desire for the township to connect this portion of the township to a portion of Coldstream. There may have been some agreement with the prior applicant, the developer was, none of those are our clients. Prior developer, we don't, we don't even know what the agreement was. If that is a constraint, we're happy to come to the table and talk on that. So, land use and development, the cited portion of the comprehensive plan, from our review, we agree was really the only portion that could potentially be applicable to this PUD, although it appeared to be speaking more to changing setbacks and lot sizes due to topographical, topographical features. Don't believe that's been an issue here so far. The previous no-clearing proposal, again, while it has been taken back a bit, the township's still getting a significant amount of, of a commitment to keep trees in place. So, I believe there is a real benefit there. Nor do I think any of the applicants intend to clear-cut anything regardless. As far as the conservation area being on private property, we don't see any legal difference between the property being in the individual's name, a trust's name, and the name of an LLC or an HOA. It's still a party that's not the township. I, I believe we can address enforcement rights through the declaration. That should not be an issue. If that's a constraint, we can deal with that. The township can also clearly monitor this. Flip to the back of the report, you'll see some beautiful drawn pictures. It's all there. It's doable. It's not a constraint. As far as hillside stability, not an issue. We have an expert here if there are questions on that. It's simply just not an issue. And the garden, the garden was built with consent of the adjacent developer. We understand that that presents an issue. Apologies there. It will be removed and can be removed if it is inconsistent with the PUD application. We feel it's not something that's really relevant to the PUD application. It's more of a, you know, notice of zoning violation would be heard separate and apart from this, but we're happy to deal with it here to make sure everything's treated consistently with the township's expectations. with the township's expectations. So with that, we'll move on to the recommendations that, um, Mr. Drury went through. I unfortunately will go through all fifteen of these because I feel like I have to. So I'll try to move quickly, though. Item one, the standard, compliance with the zoning resolution and with the purposes of the zone district in which the proposed use and development is to be located. Staff notes it currently meets the zoning requirements. We agree, as indicated before, the only thing that's changing here is a private gate, private road. And township gains the conservation area and, and the reduction in strain on its forces to maintain the road. Item two, applicability of, and, of and consistency with the plan. Staff, and I quote here, "Staff is of the opinion that the application is not consistent with the vision and goals of the Board of Trustees as outlined in the adopted Anderson Plan." This statement is frankly in stark contrast to the statement in item fourteen, which states that the property as it currently stands is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The, the only thing being changed here is the addition of a gate. And if you look at your comprehensive plan, the word "gate" doesn't appear in it. Nowhere in there does the word "gate" appear. So we don't feel like we're violating the comprehensive plan. We think we're in the spirit and intent of that plan. Item three, compatibility with, um, surrounding land uses. As we noted, there's a gate right across the way. Um, some other high-profile residents of the township, um, are enjoying the use of that gate. The, this gate, and I'll note that the specifics haven't been submitted, but that can be done. It'll be consistent with the area, and I can assure you, if you just look at the construction, these high-end houses, you're going to have a nice gate, you're going to have nice landscaping. We're willing to work with the township to ensure that. Item four, whether the size and physical features of the project area enable adequate protection of surrounding property and orderly and coordinated improvement of property in the vicinity of the site. Um, staff notes that a landscaping plan wasn't submitted. Um, no details on the gate. Again, we can get you that. If you need that as a condition, we're happy, we're happy to provide that. Item five, whether the pro- proposed phasing of the development is appropriate and the, and the development completed within the proposed timeframe. Um, we have the applicants here. They can give you a little more insight as to where construction stands. If, if the commission needs some sort of commitment or schedule for the completion of, of construction within reason, I, I'm sure we can do that as well. As you saw from the pictures, it's, it's well underway. Item six, whether the size and physical features of the project area enable adequate protection of surrounding property and orderly and conditioned improvement of property in the vicinity of the site. Staff notes that since we're requesting a private drive, more information is needed to determine if all utilities will become private, including water, sewer, and stormwater, and whether the gate is adequate for fire and rescue safety crews. So a couple of things here. We've worked with, uh, Greater Cincinnati Waterworks and MSD. The water main will remain public. The other facilities are private. Greater Cincinnati Waterworks is, um, fine with our plan, um, in keeping it public. We've actually, um, installed pavers around the gate that you can actually drive around this gate. You don't even need to open it. And Greater Cincinnati Waterworks can get around the gate. Your fire trucks can get around the gate as well. They, they will hold that. We have testimony here, experts to, to ensure you that the fire trucks can, that the pavers being installed can hold the fire trucks. So really no response time difference, because you can just go around this thing. It's really just the gate appearance itself that will deter people from coming on these properties. That's what we're looking for. Just like any six-foot fence that I can jump. If I see it, though, I know that they don't want me on the property, right? Item seven, um, as noted, is inapplicable, as there's no historic features. Item eight, whether the, whether modification of the zoning or other regulations are warranted by the innovative design of the development plan. Um, staff notes it's already built, and the conservation area will be located on private property. Again, we've all been around zoning long enough to know that no application meets every aspect of the code. Some are inapplicable, just like item seven was. Um, sure, this is not your average PUD application because construction in progress, but that's not a reason to deny it. Um, again, the township's getting a benefit, and our clients would be getting their gate. Item nine, the adequacy of proposed pedestrian circulation system to insulate pedestrian circulation from vehicular movement. Um, staff notes sidewalks are existing. Uh, we agree they're in place. Uh, I don't think that should be a constraint here. Item ten, the adequacy of the provisions for visual and acoustical privacy. Um, staff notes the development is a single, a single family, consistent with surrounding properties, and a landscaping plan and gate details along Ayers Road were not submitted. Again, we said we'll provide them. Item eleven, whether the development includes an appropriate mount and appropriate access to dedicated open spaces. So we feel that the area being dedicated as a conservation area i- is adequate. It, it's not an open space. It's not open to the public, but that's the very reason we need the gate. Um, and I don't think any of the public really should be back in this area of the township in the backyards of, of the applicants. So again, I don't think that, that, uh, parameter fits neatly within what's being done here. Item twelve, whether the development will be detrimental to present and potential surrounding uses. Um, staff notes the development is existing. Um, we would say partially existing, uh, but is not complete, and there's still one aspect, the gate, that is missing. Item thirteen, consistency of the development with recommendations from township, county, state, or federal agency staff. Staff, township staff notes that the subdivision has already been approved and recorded without the PUD, and they don't believe this is the appropriate mechanism. To speak to that, the, the recommendation, or at least the township, um, suggesting maybe we could create panhandle parcels, the reason that doesn't work is these are in place, all of them. I shouldn't say all of them. I don't know that for fact, but many of them are mortgaged. So Brian, we could probably seven-eleven these things out, create panhandle parcels, um, and go through that route, but getting all of these lenders to agree is not economically feasible. It'd create a lot of hardship for the applicants, basically. Item fourteen, I think we discussed this, whether the development is consistent with the vision and goals adopted by Anderson Township Board of Trustees. Staff says the development is existing, and it meets the vision and goals of the plan. We would agree, and again, by adding a gate, that doesn't change. And finally, item fifteen. Whether the development provides adequate protection of natural features on the property, including land over twenty percent slope, floodplain, and wetland areas, areas permanently inundated by water, and areas protected by ODNR. And again, this comes back to the thirteen acres, uh, proposed for the conservation area and the HOA versus private property. Again, I think we can put a condition on a grant that staff, you know, can reasonably approve the declaration. Maybe even be in a party to that declaration for enforcement purposes. Maybe a private contract is the answer, but either way, we're not trying to run from enforcement of what we're agreeing to do here. So that's my thirty thousand foot view. I, I think next, unless any of my partners here think I missed anything.
No, I don't want to summarize about the benefit of all, so, so, I feel like this, I guess my partners want this back one day, but we have Jeremy Hayden.
Again, Jeremy, this would be falling under, you know, part of a PUD process, so you'd have to come up, state your name and address.
Yeah. I'll tell you, he, I think Jeremy just wanted to say again that, you know, there's a lot of benefits coming to the township from this. Um, you're getting a high-end development. Uh, and we all know Anderson lives and dies on its tax revenues based on property, and then our, our clients here are boosting that and, and building really nice houses. Um, so hopefully we can get a private gate and the benefit of the conservation area and maintaining Tree City USA for, for Anderson. Um, with that, I believe some of, come on up.
Thanks, Kit.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, zoning commission staff, Richard Arnold, McGill Smith Punchin, thirty-seven hundred, Park Forty-two Drive, Cincinnati, four five two four one. I've been sworn in. As far as this project's concerned, uh, our company, McGill Smith Punchin, has been involved in this project in one way, shape, or form since the fall of two thousand four. And, uh, I've been with the firm for forty-five years. I want to just, uh, affirm a couple of items here, uh, as far as the Greater Cincinnati Waterworks is concerned. That water main will remain a public water main, and, and we have worked out the issues with, uh, in particular Phil Young and other representatives of the Cincinnati Waterworks. As far as the sanitary sewer is concerned, yes, it's a private sewer. However, it's maintained by the Ayers Road Sewer Association. This is an association that was put together sometime around two thousand six. And that association serves approximately a hundred and fifty residents in this development, where we've got a low-pressure force main. So the low-pressure force main that traverses along the, the future private drive, that's going to be maintained by the Ayers Road Sewer Association. Uh, now the storm sewers will be maintained privately, just like the road, and it'll be part of the covenants and restrictions that's going to be put together, uh, by this group here. And, uh, as far as the, uh, fire safety is concerned, you heard the chief. He described to you what their, what their fire code states. And I believe that this party here has presented to you a plan that exceeds those requirements in that, that as Kit alluded to, he has stated to you on the south side of this intersection that the fire department and the Greater Cincinnati Waterworks, at any time they can, there's going to be an access road with the paver grids that supports a fire truck. So we believe that, uh, we've actually exceeded those requirements. And, uh, we hope that you see it as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Hammond. I'm a geotechnical engineer. Um, I've worked eighteen years with, uh, well, I guess I need to give address.
State your address, yeah.
Yep. Two eight six nine Linwood Avenue.
And, okay, are you a geotechnical engineer for this project?
So I'm a geotechnical engineer that is working for, uh, homeowners, um, in this area. I have not done previous work with the construction of the houses. I have worked for previous homeowners in this Coldstream Estates development, but I have not worked on these specific houses. Uh, with that said, I just wanted to address a few things that, that they, um, pointed out to me in the application or in the, in the, um, in the work, in the, the staff, uh, report here. So I, you know, noting that there were some concerns addressed about hillside stability. Um, the, the site, the whole hillside that we're dealing with is considered, has shallow bedrock, and the bedrock's exposed along the face of the hillside as you go up and down through the woods. I've actually worked for homeowners below, uh, this development before also, and have looked up. You can see the shallow bedrock in the hillside. Any slide would be a very small, isolated slide that would occur, and I don't anticipate any of that because of the shallow nature of the bedrock. And in thirty years of, uh, being a geotechnical engineer in the area, I've not seen landslides related to clearing operations or anything like that. So I have no concerns that, uh, any of the clearing operations that have been performed, uh, and none are proposed beyond this, uh, would have anything to do with hillside instabilities in the area.
Could you spell your name and your address again? I didn't.
I'm sorry.
What was your name again? I didn't get your.
Yes, it's Christopher Hammond, H-A-M-A-N-T.
Okay.
So Hammond Engineering is the consulting company that I.
Thank you.
With that, um, ask questions of the, you know, presenting attorney, we'll start with Dr. Baker's.
And we may have some more testimony. Would you like us to put that on first?
Really, I think we're just following your testimony, and then, you know, that's not evidence, so I think we close out you, and then we go to the people that actually are presenting evidence that are not, and attorney.
Correct, but we just had two present evidence.
I was going to say, you've had two, two witnesses already that are not attorneys, and so I would think that if you have questions of either, either of those two, you can proceed. Obviously, uh, Kit, it's not, you know, giving testimony, he's kind of giving legal argument and such. Um, but if, I would say, you know, if you have questions, it, the two technical experts, and I assume you're going to have more fact witnesses.
Correct, yes.
So if you have those technical questions, go ahead. All right. So any questions of the geotechnical engineer or the civil engineer?
No, thank you.
Mr. Aliff, any questions of the geotechnical engineer or civil engineer?
Yeah, I have a few on that. Um, on the road, and maybe this is for Mr. Houston, even though he's not providing evidence, but the road, if it goes private, that's a public road, right, right now, so it's, it's tax-supported. If this goes private, what is your mechanism in place to continue to care for the road? And also, I'm scratching my head a little bit on keeping the water public, they're getting in there and working on it. I mean, there's, it sounds like there's a tremendous a lot, amount of real estate work to be done on this to make it happen. How are you going to set that up to take care of this road?
I might have to defer to one of my partners, but.
It should, but the declaration would be the answer.
Maybe Mr. Arnold knows.
Thank you. Uh, the way we've, we've got it right now, we, we've worked out with the Greater Cincinnati Waterworks, is the entire parcel that's going to be created as a result of changing the street from a private, or public street to private street, plus fifteen feet on the north side of that drive that would then go around the cul-de-sac to lots six and seven. That would be the easement that would be dedicated to the Greater Cincinnati Waterworks that would give them the opportunity to go in and maintain the line. And in addition, the access that I alluded to, that's going to support the fire truck, that'll also be an easement that will be give, given to, uh, Greater Cincinnati Waterworks to write to access, maintain the main.
So you have to write up some easements for it, or you've done it. It'll be part of the platte or something?
There'll be an easement platte that gets put together, and then the Greater Cincinnati Waterworks will share it with their attorney. It'll actually go before city council before it's over to sign off.
Oh, boy.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and, uh, do, do the owners understand that if they turn this road private in fifteen years when it needs to be rebuilt, even though their tax burden, they're paying the same tax levies for the streets as everybody else, they won't have that dedicated to their street? They'll have to pay for, they'll have to pay for maintaining it and repaving it and all that stuff going forward. They are aware of that?
I think that would probably be when.
I would, yeah, I would defer to them, but yes, I think they're acutely aware that the road will be private.
I'm sorry, am, am I asking the wrong person?
Yeah, I think that would be, you know, a question for one of the homeowners when they.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's appropriate for, I think Kit can give an answer.
Well, I'm not going to ask it again. Everybody already heard it.
Yeah. But I mean.
I believe. They, they are aware that the road is, is private and it will be their obligation.
Well, it comes up all the time, you know. How come his road's being plowed and mine isn't, you know?
I, I can tell you they are aware that the township will no longer plow their roads, or their road, I should say.
All right. And lastly, uh, maybe this is one, but I kind of understand where the staff is, uh, coming from. This is a complex piece of property, one, but, uh, doing all the gymnastics of a PUD just to get, obviously, we're trying to get, or your goal is to get the street private. What are the other solutions to do that besides a PUD, if any?
It would involve cross-conveyances amongst the parcels to creep, create panhandles. And again, because of that conveyance of fee interests in these parcels, lenders would need approval. And as we all know, sometimes getting lender approval is difficult, if not impossible, for even the smallest tasks. So this is our way of accomplishing, again, just the installation of a gate without having to create panhandles, which really serve no purpose if you've ever looked at a tax map. Uh, they're frankly quite ridiculous, but.
I understand. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson. All right. I've got a couple of questions, probably for the engineer. There was a discussion of the emergency access easement, and that would be a paved road. Has there been an auto-turn analysis done on that to truly provide fire department access ease? I mean, it's almost a U-turn.
To, to clarify, it's, it's actually paving grids.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, if, if this, uh, PUD goes through for approval, we will provide Chief Martin with the auto-turn analysis to support the, uh, the alignment of the, uh, emergency access for them.
Okay, and that would be for both directions of their incoming?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Generally, and even on the last PUD analysis, we were provided landscape plan, information on the gates for us to evaluate to make the PUD approval. Was any of that recreated for this, or is this a, if, if approved, we will, we promise? And promises are, are a little scary.
I do, yeah, I understand, and I do not, I don't believe those plans have been. Um, again, if it provides some comfort, if you just look at these houses, no one's going to put a, an unattractive gate in front of it. We're happy to, uh, work with township staff. Um, if, if, if we can give them approval powers in the condition of the grant being the gate be reasonably approvable, approved by staff, um, I think that makes sense, along with the landscaping. We'll, and certainly we'll work with the township to make it happy. We'll, and certainly will work with the township to make it happy.
With regard to the easement, it was talked about fifteen feet on the north side, and is that fifteen feet into the thirty-foot landscape easement that's really part of the adjacent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, in that easement, will they be repair and replace requirements put on the homeowners? Because Cincinnati Water Works is going to do their work and be gone. You know, so in essence, restore it back to where it was at the time that they came in to do their repairs.
Well, it's likely that the homeowners association would be required to maintain that if any event GCWW has to go in there, but I will also mention to you-
Most likely, or will be part of the easement?
Well, it will be. But, but in addition to that, there's also a low pressure forced main and a fifteen-foot easement in favor of the Ayers Road Sewer Association. So you've already got a similar situation right now, so we're not adding any additional burden than is already on the books.
But, you know, if it's public, it's sort of a different sort of avenue, I think, as far as, you know, sort of restoring it back. But, you know, that's, again, something that could be addressed in easement, it should just be addressed in easement.
Absolutely, it will be. No doubt.
For the civil engineer, or the, I'm sorry, the geotech engineer, you said, you know, based on the low bedrock depth, the low, you know, soil level, most likely wouldn't be a slide, or it'd be a minor slide. I mean, you know, have there been any borings done, or anything to verify truly the depth of the bedrock to for-
So I've witnessed bedrock along the slope before, and in a site visit here, you could see pieces of limestone, you know, scattered about. Just familiarity with the general site, I've done borings on different properties on the, in the Coldstream Development, but not specific to these lots. But just by, you know, understanding of the local geology, and by, you know, by iso, by small and isolated, I mean, we're talking slips that would be one to two feet thick and would terminate but before any woods line, or would terminate, you know, you know, I mean, immediately, they're going to be, you know, ten to twenty feet tall. It's more of an erosion situation than it is a deep-seated landslide. We just don't have that problem on this hillside.
So the erosion's really brought about by the removal of the vegetation? They kind of a little bit go hand in hand, is that correct?
Uh, yes and no, but, but these slopes aren't de-vegetated, they've just been cleared of trees. So erosion is generally controlled by, by the more shallow-rooted vegetation that may flourish with less trees.
Can I ask you kind of a related question to that? So are you saying that the slides, if any, would happen, would probably be more in the area where it's been cleared, but the, the area where the trees are currently maintained would likely not have slides?
I guess what I'm trying to say is that clearing of trees does not create a landslide. So, if there were, if somebody were to say there's a concern of landslide because you've cleared some trees, well, it would be isolated to that area that was cleared and not extend beyond it. I don't believe it's a problem either way.
Yeah, and I was gonna, because it seems to me, obviously, the trees would support as opposed to degrade the hillside as far as a slope, if it's that shallow, the bedrock, right? I mean, it just makes sense to me that-
Yeah, the trees are just kind of irrelevant to the slope stability problem.
Okay.
Or lack of problem, I guess, is the-
Right, yeah.
And then, I guess, last question I have is back to the civil engineer. The conservation easement is, especially on the south side, fairly significant off of the current clearing. Is there a reason or justification of that, or why didn't the conservation sort of encompass more land and essence go to the existing clearing line?
Well, in this particular case, I believe that the property owner was wanting to get the, the best view of the Ohio River as he possibly could, and in order to achieve that, it warranted a few more trees being cleared.
Well, I guess, looking at the site plan, you know, why isn't the conservation easement, especially along the south, in essence, brought northward almost to the existing blue line of what they say is existing clear? You know, why, why do we have additional cover that could be cleared in the future?
If I could interject, I don't think he can speak for the knowledge of someone else, but when Ms. Ruby Miller comes up here, I think she can give you the answer you're looking for, if that would work.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for you guys, so thank you very much. Okay, the next person that would like to speak in support of the application would like to come and state their name and address and affiliation to the case.
Mr. Jeffrey, would you like to speak, sir? I don't intend to ask these witnesses' questions, they more know what they want to tell you, so I'll still stand here.
You can sit if you want, I mean, that's fine.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you giving me and my family the opportunity to discuss this case with you. My name's Jeff Ruby, I'm building a house on Waterfront Way. To begin with, what's most important to me is life safety for everybody, and safety for my children and myself. What's, what's true is, we have and we will cooperate, and, and on every condition, every requirement, every reasonable request, you know, we will comply and cooperate with everything you asked. So far, that's what I'm, I think we've done. I know I've done it, and every situation that's been brought up are the no-brainers, are the obvious ones, that we were under the impression that these would be met, and we will meet them. We were under the impression when we invested in all this land and built these homes that we would have a secure gate and a, and that's why we, we invested millions of dollars here. Life safety, the fire, I had a fire, we had a fire. My kids grew up at Sunny Acres, two sixty-eight Sunny Acres Drive. That was my first house. We opened the precinct that year. And we had a fire there. And the fire department, Anderson Township, was there in about fifteen, twenty minutes, contained the fire. And thank God, thank them, that, you know, we, nobody was hurt, my dog got out, we got out. There was a lot of damage, all, but all my memorabilia, everything I ever did in high school and college, and all those things were gone, but that was one fire. I was a guest at the Peabody Hotel in Memphis, Tennessee. There was a fire, one up on the roof escaped that fire. There was a fire at the MGM Grand in Las Vegas. I'm there for every fire, I'm in that fire as a guest. May twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-seven, I was also a guest at the Beverly Hills Nightclub, and I'm sure you've heard about that. And hundred and sixty-five people died. I was with my future wife, the mother of my children. I was one of the last ten or fifteen people to get out of that tragedy alive. And I helped women, and it was documented, it's been noticed, that I helped other women get out. Their high heels were getting stuck in those grates on the exit, one of two exits for a place that held two thousand people. And so I was in that fire. And what's most important to me is we're going to make, do everything to comply and cooperate with any condition on fire safety, or life safety. Then we got, what do we got? We got ambulances. Well, I can tell you, on July twenty-first, at about six in the morning this year, my other son, who's not here, is because he's in a hospital, and he's been in a hospital for eight weeks. And fighting for his life for about five weeks, and now in a brain rehabilitation hospital in Denver, Colorado, fighting for his quality of life. That, those paramedics showed up in four minutes for my son, right here. Took him to that hospital right there. And he was there for about four or five hours, and then we got rushed to Jewish Hospital in Kenwood. That's the reason he's not here tonight, he's recuperating. Life safety, there's nothing more important going to be on Waterfront Way, as far as I'm concerned, my kids, than complying and cooperating and being a good citizen when it comes to any of those things. Now we got the police department. Well, I can tell you, my relationship with the police, I've been a keynote speaker for the FOP, I've been honored by the Columbus Police Department, the Louisville Police Department, the Cincinnati Police Department. And the relation, we were, there was a, in Covington too, Covington, Kentucky, we had a, I got, I got my boss here telling me-
I was gonna say, I think you're hit and pushed.
We were the command center at the waterfront when a policeman, they were looking for his body in the river, and we were command, we will cooperate. Now, this is not a privacy gate. Everyone wants their privacy. This is a security gate. I've had death threats for me, on me, three times, all in the effort to try to help people I didn't even know get justice. And I had death threats, serious death threats, okay? My, my daughter's house, she can tell you, was broken into in Anderson, they had to move, it was, it was dangerous what happened to them. My son's been mugged, my Dylan, his apartment's been broken into. I left where I was living because there was a constant stalking of me, they want to see Jeff, you know, they want to stalk Jeff Ruby. One guy was out in front of my house at two in the morning with his lights on his car, and I was up watching TV, and I ran down, chased him. Of course, not far, he had a car. I had a, where I live now in Anderson, a woman in broad daylight, drive by me, slow down, take her video camera and videotape me sitting on my front porch, right now on seventy-three twenty-one Waterpoint Lane. We had a, we've had a series of these things, okay? And now I'm rushed, I'm forgetting probably one of the most, oh. There was a attempted murder on my next-door neighbor. Three, three layers of involvement, the architect, the middle man, and the three perpetrators, attackers. It was, it was a contract hit. My next-door neighbor luckily survived and beaten badly. I was the intended target for that, I happened to be in Pittsburgh at the time with the Bengals, and these three idiot crime villains got the wrong house. Good for me, not good for my friendly neighbor, but he survived, but that was another situation. The security is most important, this is, this is a security gate that we need. I'm Jewish, I don't need to tell you how, how terrible it is now, anti-Semitism has skyrocketed, there's never been this bad. We've attended Jewish associations, we've learned from meetings how bad it is, you can't, a lot of Jews won't even admit they're Jewish, and they're not going now. That's another, and most important to mention of this whole thing, is we're a Jewish family, I'm Jewish, I'm a well-known public figure, my daughter's a public figure, we've been nationally garnered attention from everything, from left to right, from CNN to Fox News, to every ESPN, national to NBC, we have been in the news. We are visible, high-profile public figures, at least the two of us are. And that doesn't make it any safer for us.
All right, thank you, just a second. Any questions, Mr. Hanson? Mr. Ellon? Or Dr. Baker? Thank you, Mr. Ruby. State your name and address and affiliation to the case, please.
Brittany Ruby Miller, one thirty Waterfront Way. And I'm just one of the homeowners. Also, I just want to mention that the other neighbors are also here in agreement, I think, first and foremost, on the security. So I think that you've heard pretty much everything, there's nothing else that I can reiterate. I do want to apologize, it seems that there was some convoluted way of getting here. As Kit mentioned, you know, we weren't part of that first application. We were under the impression when we purchased the properties, that there would be no concern getting a gate, that this would be fine. Just regarding this blue line here, you know, when we moved in, not only did we think, you know, not, it was contingent upon, do we have a gate and the beautiful views of the Ohio River? And so I just want to say that, you know, and we respect our developer, we're very grateful for the property that we have. I love Anderson Township, I went to high school here, we grew up here, now I'm raising up my kids here, and this is a family compound. So my, my brothers and my father, we moved here because of security. Yes, I was robbed a couple of years ago, they broke in, it was a serious concern, it's, you can see it all with the police records and whatnot. We've had serious concern currently. We went back because I knew I was going to be under oath and I wanted to be honest, but we looked at the average of how many people are coming back there a day, and it's five every hour to spectate. So when you're outside and you're just sitting in your yard, and in the spirit of Monday Night Football, for all those Who Day fans, there is a couple Bengals that are high-profile, and I think that they're mistaking also somebody's house back there for mine, because I'm getting Joe Burrow mail at my house. So I, regardless, there's, you know, I don't want to have to clarify, and even whether or not it is, you know, kind of premeditated, that people do understand that there's Ruby's back there, I don't want to say that we are high-profile, only because we're no different than our neighbors that are here today as well. The difference is we do, we are outspoken, and, and I think that putting, you know, our restaurants out there and what we do for the community, we have an obligation to do that, and so that's why our, we've signed up and are happy to do what we do for the business and for the economy. Regarding the trees, I love the trees, I, I am a, you know, I apologize for the garden, we thought that was our land, and we were given verbal approval, and so if it's about the fence, we can take the fence down and do what we need to do. Regarding security as well, we actually bought one of the lots in the villas over there, Lot fourteen, because we hired a full-time security family. He is retiring from Cincinnati SWAT, and he's coming on board to protect our family, that's how serious it is, and so he's pretty, going to be pretty close to the gate. This is not something that we take lightly, and so we just want to thank you, yes, the back and forth, I apologize that that's happened, most of that was out of our control and, you know, misunderstanding just as a homeowner and not being the developer. But this is something that we are really, really hoping can get resolved in whatever manner it takes, and we do want this to look very nice, and we are open to collaborate on the landscaping and whatnot, so I don't have anything really else to say, other than, you know, the true security threats that we are already seeing and would have already experienced.
Thank you. Well, I was warned that drove back your lane this weekend, so I apologize. That's part of the commission, so-
Sure.
Mr. Ellon, any questions of this avenue? Dr. Baker? Mr. Hanson?
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Okay, if you could state your name and address and affiliations to the case, please.
My name's Mike Weigle, I live at one eighty Waterfront Way for about three months now. I've talked to all my neighbors, we are all very aware of it being private, that we will not get snow service, we will have to pay for our own road when it needs resurfaced in fifteen years. We don't like any of that. But the parade of cars and people coming through there is unbearable. And they don't just drive by, some folks stop, a lot of them, I've confronted more than one myself, we live there right now. We're not under construction, they get out, they go back in the construction, they've come back my driveway, they take pictures, they look around, they drive motorcycle back in there, one, two different cases of that. We have cameras where we catch them when we're not there doing things like this. So that's, that's a big problem that we're hoping we can get solved here today. We appreciate you looking at it, and ask that you pass it without further delay and expense. That's all.
From my knowledge, your address, which lot are you on, sorry?
Two.
Two, okay. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? I just want to, we are, yeah, that's okay. I just want to, again, please come up and state your name and address and affiliation.
I'm Jeremy Hayden, I'm an attorney, partner at Taft, been out-
I'm Jeremy Hayden, I'm an attorney, partner at Taft, been outside general counsel for the Ruby family, I don't know, nearly a decade. I've known these people for a long time, I've gone through everything from business matters to personal matters with them. They're not only my clients, they're my friends, they're like family to me. I want to thank the staff first and all of you for your time today and attention, I know the Bengals are almost on, I won't stand in the way of that. Staff, thank you, I know there's been some misconceptions, we're sorry for that, we want to get this right, we want to cooperate, we want you on our side. I'm just trying to think how to best say this, I think Jeff already did it. The Rubies are well outspoken advocates for justice. You can think of all the examples you want to think of, whether it's OJ or whatever it may be, and I'm not trying to get political here, I'm trying to stretch my imagination, but they do what they think is right. And sometimes, there's a price for doing what's right.
If you could state the facts.
I'm, I'm, I'm almost done. I'm gonna tie it to the facts very carefully, because in the staff report, and I'm not throwing stones, please don't take it that way, heightened security was in quotes. Heightened security is real, this gate is needed. You've heard it from testimony from the neighbors, you've heard how important it is, you've heard what, what's going on back there, you've heard what happened to a former not-so-lucky neighbor of Jeff's in the past, you can see why they'd have concern, not only for them, but for their kids. We're here to protect the trees, but most importantly, we're here to protect the people and the residents. And I will tell you, I think that this is a win-win for the township, in my view, because those property values are gonna go up, there'll be higher taxes, you're gonna be able to protect trees in a way you can't protect them now, they're unprotected right now, they're gonna be giving protections by putting a line there that's not there now, so township wins in that. And all my clients are wanting, are the protection of the, of the private gate, to keep people out, to put a barrier, even if it's a psychological barrier. Again, thank you for your time.
There was one more property owner here, I don't think they're gonna have any new testimony, but if the commission wanted to hear that they are in support, they're, they're here if you want to hear it, if not.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as the opening statement, if somebody wants to support the previous statement, they can come up.
We'll try to make a brief, I don't think there's anything new.
Name, address.
Yeah, hi, Brian Anderson, one seven zero Waterfront Way, and.
Can you tell us what?
It's Lot, Lot number three. And this really is all about security, you know, same as what my neighbors have said. Literally, I'm still building, I'm probably three months from finishing, I'm there almost every day, multiple cars coming through, I've seen multiple people in my backyard, and, you know, quite frankly, I'm, I'm gonna be moving next to Mr. Ruby, I don't want to be that family, you know, God forbid, we don't want people in the neighborhood that, you know, have bad intentions, so please take in consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the applicant? Okay, now, anyone who'd like to speak opposed to the application? Seeing no movement on that, you know, we'll go into, if anyone on the commission has any additional questions to any of the people that spoke?
Okay.
One additional question, maybe from Mr. Arnold, which is, the testimony is very important, and so I'm not diminishing that by asking him a land question, but when the clearcutting takes place, and it's apparent from the photos, and I heard the testimony about that it's shallow and the rocks are there and stuff, what, is something done, have you done like, okay, once you've cut this, there should be some protective plantings, seeding, something put down, so the hillside's just not bare, how is that addressed?
Well, in this particular, well, in this particular case, it would be addressed by the, the planting requirements that are administered by the Hamlin County Soil Conservation District. I mean, typically, we have general notes on the plans, it tells what type of seeding and stabilization that needs to occur on bare areas, and that's what we apply to, to maintain stability of that slope.
Okay, is that, is that built in through your building department review, or how do they look at that?
It's, it's typically built in to the land development portion of the review. So when, so when we're on a, on a project, and, and we're developing a clearing and grading plan, and what they call is an SWP three Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, you know, those, those types of elements are taken into account and addressed on the plan, so that the Soil Conservation District has a comfort level to issue a permit.
I got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did I elaborate?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the site wasn't necessarily clear-cut, the trees were, were cut, the underbrush remains, and the underbrush is probably more dense now than it was with the trees in place.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, with that, Dr. Baker, we'll start with you to discussion amongst the commission.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, in general, private gates are a bad book. I think they send the message that some people are more important than other people, I think that they are somewhat, somewhat undermine the notion of a democracy, and I think the bar should be extremely high to have one, and so I think, you know, I'm kind of in agreement with what staff found, and I would anticipate two things, one, that there are other ways to handle security concerns, and two, that the visiting will die down as the places are completed and people get used to them.
Okay, I do want to take care of one procedural thing, is we'll close the public hearing, you know, and now, you know, we'll take yours out of the public hearing, but it's still part of the record, so thank you, Dr. Baker. Mr. Eller, any?
Yeah, I have some thoughts on it, it's actually really complicated, and sometimes we're asked in zoning to take care of a problem which you would really never anticipate, is a land use and zoning issue, which in this case, there's a couple things going on here. One is the security problem, I heard that loud and clear. It is a fact that, it's well-known, probably throughout Cincinnati, that this is a really terrific area, and people are curious, people are curious about the celebrities that live there, and, yeah, people go back there a lot. And, but, how do we resolve this problem? I don't have a good answer for that, however, I am in favor of the request, because, one is, and I know, I heard what, what Mr. Powell said about the posture's different, but I don't think it's substantially different, and, you know, I, I agree with Dr. Baker, I'm not a big fan of gates, really, but, one of the reasons I'm not a big fan of them is because of the safety concerns. In this case, it's gonna help, probably, to some degree, and it was really important for me, for Chief to come and take the time to tell us that, you know, there are ways of dealing with this. It's a unique situation, this is, this doesn't happen, we're not a great tool to deal with it, but, it's, it's a terrific development, and I think this is really kind of a, it's really kind of a minutia thing to approve the gate that was already approved, and so I, I'm in favor of it, I'll, I'll quit saying that, but also the, the clearing, Mr. Arnold's comments about, there is some oversight on that, I am, if we approve this, I really don't have expectations of our staff being able to do that, because what happens when you have these kinds of things is, there's a line on this plan that is, the conservation rights are probably among the property owners, not really in favor, they're not a general, like, covenant that anybody can go enforce. So it's kind of up to the residents to enforce that, and so that's gonna be on you guys to, to live up to that, I think. If somebody calls Paul's office and the trees are cut, there's, there's literally nothing he can do about it. But, this is a kind of a tough situation, I think it's, I don't think zoning is a great answer for this, but it's the only answer we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Yeah, I spent too much time talking with some of your thoughts, Brian, but it's a funky situation, where, you know, I think some of the players, residents are involved from the very beginning of this, and so I think, maybe I'll speak a little bit collectively, that I think our frustrations are more directed at the developers who have been involved this entire time, and sort of, you know, did the back and forth game. If there is any frustration that you're sensing up here, it does have to be with you as residents in the name of these houses, and please don't take it that way. To Brian's point again, though, this is a funky method of, of getting what we're trying to get here. It, it does seem as simple as like putting up a gate and calling it a day, as we all know, land use, that's just not the case. So, I think my concerns still go back to the no clearing zone, actually, my focus is more along Hillah Avenue, I don't want to see those lots get split and developed at the bottom of the hill, but, I think this has to get there, for these people to get there.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I think one of the struggles I've had is, you know, we've asked for, been asked for an approval of something that we don't know, okay? It's gonna be a gate, and, you know, we are, I think, you know, my driving through, down the road, it is a very high end, but, you know, again, we have no idea what this gate's gonna look like, what landscaping around it's gonna possibly be, you know, and the previous submission and all that was very well defined, you know? You know, so, you know, that's part of the struggle I'm having with this, is, you know, we've been asked to approve a gate under a PUD, but we have no idea of what this gate and what the surroundings are gonna be, okay? So, how can we burden staff with an, an expectation that we can't define because we don't, we've not been presented one, okay? You know, and then the conservation, you know, truly, how is that gonna be written? How is that gonna be enforced? Or, you know, how's that gonna be enforced for the people that buy the house after, you know, the current owners sell it, you know, is that gonna be a deed restriction? You know, all those things have to be, in my opinion, understood a lot more before we can approve them. And, and that's where I'm struggling right now. So, you know, I don't know if the law director has any ideas on how to take that and.
I don't, and, and I think that's something that Paul and maybe Kit might have some input on, is just because, you know, if this is approved tonight, it's gonna have to obviously have conditions that I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know as far as the timing for the property owners, what, what their need is, or what their hope is to be able to have this gate installed, but I guess the question I would have, probably to you, Kit, is, is there any reason why we don't continue the, the matter until the October meeting to give a chance to provide at least a better outline of what's going to be in the, the documents as far as the, the preservation area, a better idea about what, how the gate's going to be, landscaping plan, which, I don't know, Paul, you may be able to answer this better, what would generally be required from the landscaping plan, but I, I do think there's a lot of unknowns that have to, I think you suggested staff would have to work those out, but if staff's not able to reach an agreement with you, then where are we? I, I don't have an answer to that.
I wouldn't know how to.
Yeah, sure.
And I wouldn't know how to make a motion to put conditions on it.
Yeah.
To define something.
I guess I just, and, and I guess it's, it's really here, so we know the size of the gate, we know the pavers that are gonna, gonna go in down, the technical, the, the weight bearing, we know that the trucks can drive around them, so I just want to make sure I understand from a layman's perspective, at least on this subject, is, is it the aesthetics? What are you concerned with? And, and, and just want to help you get there, if that makes sense, because at the end of the day, even looking at the gates, and we've been working with Core on this in terms of, you know, and they've been quoting and giving us quotes and showing us different options, it's not like there's a ton of different gate designs that we're gonna go, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, you know, yeah, two options. I mean, it's, it's very limited, I mean, we, we're not gonna, and maybe that's the assurance I would give you, we're not gonna self-fabricate the gate, I mean, we're gonna buy one that's a commercial gate, it's gonna be a commercial quality. The pavers that we're doing are specifically designed for this, they're gonna go underneath, and, and what they'll do is to support the fire trucks and so forth, and heavy equipment that can go across there, so they don't even have to ring the gate, they don't have to do anything, they can literally go right around it. In terms of the landscaping, it's gonna be consistent with what it is now, I mean, and so, we could do that, we're not opposed to it, but I, but I, but I also don't want to come back here with my client's time and expense and money.
Yeah, and.
And I'm just trying to be objective in that.
No, and I think, I think we've had the testimony that, you know, you, you can make the decision whether there's any further testimony.
I think, if I could.
And I don't know if it's testimony, it's just, it's presenting a plan that's approvable.
Well, that's, and that's, that's what I was gonna say, is that we typically have enough information that the other departments, such as the fire department, will have looked at what their area of concern might be. So far, we've heard, you know, fairly good testimony about what's going to be there, but they haven't seen the calculations as far as load and things like that for the pavers, so what I'm saying is, is a, a big problem if we push this to next month for further submission by you guys, like I said, if there's any testimony that's required from the fact witnesses, you guys may want to supplement it. I, I assume that even though the, the public hearing was closed, that that could be opened up if there's additional evidence that would, you know, is required.
Could we limit, could we limit the subsequent hearing to where we buy for head, it's where we have the approval subject to contingent, because that's really what it comes down to, you want to see the design, because what I'd rather not have to do is drag a bunch of fact witnesses.
No, I agree, I agree.
What I was hoping is an approval contingent upon us coming back with the necessary information.
But the council could submit the, the designs, and the family wouldn't have to be here.
Yeah. And if there's anything the township wants to see in the declaration, then.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if they would, we, I would recommend.
You gotta give them a comfortable understanding, so, yeah. I mean, again, I, I don't, I don't know how to make a motion to put conditions on it.
Right, and that's what I was gonna say.
And approve something that we don't have a basis for approval.
Right.
And approve it based on something that's gonna be coming in, that then we can either retract that approval, or.
Well, it would be.
Or approve again, and that's where I don't think we can.
I think it would be contingent upon this body approving the design of the gate and the landscaping plan.
And, and I mean, I, I think, you know, all the testimony from today would go forward into the next, you know, if it is continued in October.
Yeah, and I think, I think to satisfy some of your guys' concerns, is if we, if, if we just, if we close the public hearing, I mean, we've already closed the public hearing, but if we, as you suggested, just keep the discussion amongst the professionals, if you will, no offense to the fact witnesses, but to deal with the issues like the gate, with the landscaping, things like that, I mean, I think we've heard testimony from the folks who are gonna be living in that, on that street, as far as what their concerns are and things like that, I mean, I, I.
We'd be fine with that.
But I can't, but I can't imagine, I, I can't imagine making, having the, the, the commission give an approval for a PUD that's subject to reversal, you know, I'm just, I, I don't, I couldn't stomach that as an attorney.
Firstly, I think the justification and the reasoning of why you want the gate, I understand.
Right.
Okay, very, very well, okay? You know, I do, would like to see details on the gate to make sure it meets all the, you know, applicable code requirements, even though there is a drive around, I'd like to see the auto turn analysis to make sure that the fire department can make the turn without going on off of the driving blocks. And, you know, I know what you're talking about, usually the grass grows up through it, but that also doesn't mean you can't plant trees and shrubs and all that where that drives. So, you know, all that sort of stuff, I would like to understand a little bit more before we just say, yeah, it's approved. I understand the justification and the reasoning, and completely understand that, okay? So, you know.
That was my question, yeah.
The detail behind it that I'm, I'm uncomfortable with.
So, it's the design and the landscaping, that is contingent upon that you're on board, and I think would approve, is what you're saying?
Yeah, like I said, I understand the justification for the gates and all that, so, but, you know, again, that's just one person's opinion, okay?
Can we just get a list of what exactly is needed?
Yeah, and I would, I guess, I would ask the board to at least give a preliminary list to the applicant as far as, you know, what you, what you would still like to see, and then Kit, we, between you and me and Paul, we can, you know, work out any of the other details. Paul, do you have anything, you haven't, you've been quiet down there when we've been talking about this?
Sorry, I'm reading the bylaws and.
Sorry, I'm reading, um, the bylaws and I, what I understood, so the one item we don't have is the declaration of, um, covenants and restrictions for the, um, or the conservation areas. We don't have a copy of that. Um, that was a concern. We don't have details of the gate and how that will function. We don't necessarily, um, have the study by Mr. Arnold of whether a fire truck can get around that gate or how that will work with our fire and rescue and with the sheriff's office. So I think those are some infor- information that we need. We need the design of the gate. I think the landscaping was mostly concerned at the front entrance. I don't know if it's necessary on private properties once you get beyond the gate, obviously. Um, and how that may impact the gate. Was there anything else I was missing? You know, some of these things, um, was the other thing I was looking at. We do need to have a discussion with regional planning of how this impacts the subdivision that has been approved. And what modifications, if the zoning commission were to approve a PUD and the new lot eight is created, how that impacts regional plannings, um, the subdivision itself? And so. Are we okay with hearing from Mr. Arnold since the case has been closed?
Yeah, I think so. We're kind of winging this part of it anyways from a procedural standpoint, just to make sure that we understand and we can, you know.
There, there will need to be a process through regional planning in that, that there'll be a preliminary application meeting, pre-app meeting. There'll be a preliminary plan, uh, prepared based on what we end up with, the PUD. And it'll go before the, uh, planning commission, typically on the first Thursday of a month. And they'll vote on that preliminary plan, and at that si- same time, they'll vote to, uh, to give staff to approve the record plat. And, and there, and it's basically, they're gonna follow suit with whatever the township comes up with.
I would like to see the conservation woman, I mean, have talked about how that benefit the township actually move northward to the existing tree clearing line. And I'll say tree clearing line just based on our existing clearing line. Again, the benefit of the township more of having more area in that conservation area.
Yeah, and then.
So you, there's gonna be additional clearing?
Are we talking about clearing or topping?
No, no, I'm saying, right now, the red line, currently on, was proposed, that we will not clear below the red line. And I thought I was heard you say we would like to see it right in the lines.
Right.
And if it moves to the blue line, it blocks all of our use.
Yeah, that was just an arbitrary line that the developer put out. I mean, it, it had not gone to the basis.
So the existing clearing line is sort of an arbitrary line that was drawn.
So, yeah.
Where the trees are now.
That's where they are now.
But I'm just saying the conservative trees are that, are there now.
Yeah, that's the red line. The red line is where we're saying, where the trees are currently in your pictures, is that we will not clear for that.
Blue line, blue line is where they're at. So where we're on. Where the trees are now.
Where they're at.
The red, the red is below, the blue line is where they are now.
Why the difference?
Yes.
Well, no, but no, I think you thought that the, the red line was where the trees were now. But from my understanding, the, the blue line is where they are now. The, the red line will be the no-clear, the no-cut area that you're committing to forever and ever.
Uh, the green line, you know, I'm agreeing with the blue line.
Is current?
Is current. Even as the developer is blocking, it's current.
We, we have cleared where it is now. Which I think is gonna be, and Dan has recorded a lot, I think, that we're gonna need a little more space right there.
Mr. Powell? So are we back in open session again? We're having a lot of discussion that's not available for cross. So I think we need to.
Reopen the public hearing.
Either reopen the public hearing or the zoning commission just states what they would like to see for the next meeting. Um, because we're having discussion that's not sub.
Can our technicians talk a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I, I believe what Brittany's alluding to is that what's gonna occur is that the existing trees are eventually gonna grow to a point that they're gonna lose their view, and that's why the red line is shown as we've got it.
The other, um, item.
Yeah, I was gonna say one thing. Yeah, I'm sorry, you not come up to give testimony, so.
Are we gonna reopen or not?
It's up to you.
I, I say that we give the condition to what we're looking for. You know, if you wanna give testimony next time, that would be fine, you know, um. Yeah, we've gotten really in a big gray area, I think, you know. Thank you, Paul. Thank you. So, uh, I think we do need to, um, give what we're looking for, um, as a submission, and you're more than welcome to come back to give more testimony. You know, if it's regarding those items or even what was discussed tonight. You know, I, like I stated previously for myself, the understanding of security and all that is very well defined. Could I, I mean, we could.
Yeah, I think, I think Paul gave a, a good list of the different items that we.
This is what I wrote down. Detail on the gate, detail on the fire access, including movements. Paul wanted to see the covenants. Wanted to see a landscaping plan. I think Rich answered how it impacts the subdivision. And I don't think we've answered, I haven't heard an answer yet on this blue line, red line. I understand the blue line is where it is, the red line is where you want it. I, does everybody, does everybody understand that? They want the red line. So is that gonna be a deal killer because we don't want them to go back and spend another ten thousand dollars and come back and say, no?
Well, I mean, you know, it was presented that the conservation area was a great benefit to the township. You know, and that was a benefit to the township. So, you know, to me, having more in the conservation area provides more benefits to the township as, as its condition of the PUD. You know, what presented now, it's the difference between blue and red because of trees growing and cutting down. Well, then what sort of prevents twenty years from now when the trees in the red grow up to say, oh, it's on my property and I understand. But, you know, we've had that a lot of times in clearing areas where, you know, somebody's clear cut. And as I believe, Mr. Ell, you mentioned, no one knows it until after they're cut down.
Well, that's why I said, that's why I said, it's, it's, it's great that it's there. There's literally nothing you can do about it after the fact. So they're saying the red line is where they want it. In fact, I thought I heard it said that that's critical to their case. I thought I heard that.
To maintain the river views and property values up. Correct.
So, you know. Is that gonna be something that will hinder something? I, I don't know. You know, I gotta look at it as a whole, too.
Okay.
Just, so for clarification purposes, is the hear- public hearing closed? And then the commission is asking for certain items to be resubmitted. But for the next meeting, we're not opening back up for public comment? Is that my understanding?
I, I think, I think if there's, if there's information that is necessary for a witness to, to address, I think we'll, we'd probably have to open it up for a limited purpose to deal with some of these particular issues. I don't know whether that will be required to have further testimony or not. But I think that the, the board or the commission can make the decision about whether it's appropriate to open up the public hearing.
So we should re-advertise it as a public meeting?
Probably so.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
May it be, I just would ask, may it be a public hearing limited to the issues that I think our chairman well put out? That, you know, the five or six issues that we have.
Yeah.
At least then we have a short, and I know who, we don't have to bring back certain technical experts. We have to bring back the G O. We don't, you know, I'm trying to limit it, the, the time it takes all of you as well.
Right, right. And that, I mean, frankly, the, the commission could limit it to, to just the people who've already testified. You know, in other words, I mean, you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I don't know if you're gonna bring out a landscape architect to present a landscape plan or a gate.
I don't think that.
That's fine. I, I think issue limitation's all we're looking for. I mean, if we're, if we've narrowed the issues, then I think we've made all our jobs easier, and that, that's all I'm looking for.
Yeah.
I, we wanna get, we wanna get it there. I mean, I think it's right.
In a public hearing, we're getting new, new information, and that's some new evidence.
Yeah.
I think we almost have to open it up to a public hearing because we're getting that new evidence.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't think it makes them a practical.
After, after the fact, after the fact with limited information.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do we need to make a motion? Yes, okay, just a moment.
So a motion to table, uh, case two dash twenty twenty-four PUD for Waterfront Estates at Coldstream? You want a motion to that?
Sue.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Donald, can you please call?
Dr. Baker?
Sure. Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Gother?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Okay.
Thank you.
We do business. All right, motion to adjourn? Okay, second?
Sure, second.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.